Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Churchill County Planning Commission here on August 13th at 6:00 PM. I call this meeting to order. Item two, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to item three. Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item four, verification and posting of the agenda.
The agenda was posted on August 7th, 2025, in accordance with NRS and Churchill County Code.
Thank you, Diane. Item five, consideration and possible action, approval of the agenda as submitted or revised. May I have a motion?
Tammy Edgeman, for the record, a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and revised.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Item six, verification and notification of all landowners in accordance with NRS and Churchill County Consolidated Development Code.
All efforts to reach out to the neighboring landowners was made.
Thank you, Diane. We'll move on to item seven, consideration of possible action, approval of the minutes of the meeting held on July 9th, 2025, public hearing.
I move to approve the minutes on the meeting held July 9th, 2025.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, passes unanimously. Moving on to item eight, old business, A, consideration of possible action, review of a special use permit, SUP 1096, previously granted to Brenda Garbido of Bulldog Auto Sales LLC for a standard vehicle sales in conjunction with Bulldog Restorations Vehicle Repair. The property is located at 3921 Arnold Way, Assessor's Parcel Number 008-411-55 in the C1 zoning district. A condition of the permit was an annual review to show progress and meeting conditions, approval of the conformance with Churchill, or with County Code. Is there anybody here to talk on that behalf? Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Brenda Garbido, 3921 Arnold Way.
All right, thank you. And then Dean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning, for the record. The Bulldog Restorations special use permit had a requirement to, for annual review for the normal reasons, but also because of some historic problems with parking on the highway, I'm sorry, on the county road. There have been, I think the Garbidos, or Ms. Garbidos provide photos that are on the screen now showing the lack of parking on the county road, as well as kind of nice orderly rows of parking, parked cars inside the lot. The code enforcement officer went by today to check things and found similar conditions. So it seems that things are under control. I guess the matter for you today is whether you want to see the property again, or see the SUP again, next year to just kind of confirm that things are going well, or if you want to end annual review at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. I know personally I've been by there several times and everything's in compliance with everything that we've agreed upon, so. And I think we can probably not have an annual review going forward unless there's a code infraction. I don't know if anybody else would like to add to that or not?
Mr. Chair, Joe Frey for the record, I'm going to recuse myself from this matter.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the board?
Tammy Edgeman, for the record, you said that we're doing the annual review to show progress, and you're saying that progress has been made, but there's also more conditions that were found today to add additional conditions? Can you clarify, please?
I don't, I don't think I said that. Or are you meaning something specific?
Correct me if I misunderstood, but I thought you said the compliance officer went out there today and found new conditions, or no conditions?
Correct, found no, no additional problems compared to last year.
Thank you, Dean. Is there anybody, anybody else have anything?
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Goings for the record. Based on the information provided here tonight, I move that we end the annual review of the Bulldog Auto Sales LLC and not have to worry about revisiting unless there's a code infraction somewhere along the way.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And so that was one, two, three, four, five. Sort of Joe recused himself. All right, thank you guys very much. All right, moving on to item nine, new business, A, consideration of a possible action, ascending application, TDR 25-1 filed by Mark Simoncini of Lonesome Duck Ranch LLC. The properties are located at 7615, 7625, and 7925 Beach Road, Assessor's Parcel Number 006-871-04, and 006-871-05, consisting of a total of 156 acres with 15.57 water-aided acres in the A10 zoning district. The applicant proposes to record a conservation easement on the properties. Is there anybody here to speak on that behalf? Can you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm Mark Simoncini.
I just touched a little deal so it turns green. There you go.
There we go. I'm Mark Simoncini, 7625 Beach Road.
All right, thank you. And Dean, would you like to?
Thank you, Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning, for the record. This application is for approval of ascending site and transfer of development rights calculation. The property has a small amount of water rights, being 15.7 acres. There are currently two residences on one property, one is uninhabitable, and one residence on the other property. The primary issue for this property is that it is partly within the accident potential zone found at the south end of the NAS Fallon Runway, which you can see on screen. The plan was initially planned for, the property was initially planned for division of home sites, however, that's not allowed, and the Navy was opposed to the land division. This property qualifies for the minimum standards for sending site and provides community benefits as described in the staff report. The sending site committee reviewed the application and recommends approval of the sending site, recommended approval of 93 TDRs. In addition, it recommended that the new TDRs be extinguished by the board to avoid increasing the overly large pool of TDRs that already exists. You'll find this in the motion, and it will probably be a recommendation for future sending site applications. Be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Dean. Is there anything you would like to add, sir?
No, I'm fine. I'm just here to answer questions.
All right. Well, I personally do not have any questions. This is something that's very common, so I'll open it up to the board if there's any other questions or concerns.
Jeff Goings for the record. So, no questions for the applicant, more directed towards staff here. So, the site, the sending site committee has, has recommended that we not approve the TDRs for, for this particular property because of a future thing that we're going to have or potentially come to us. Questioning that because, you're talking about an overabundance of TDRs, and I know this is, we're headed down a whole other path here, but is that something we want to be stepping into now without even having a hearing on the TDRs themselves?
I'm sorry, that's, I think there's a misunderstanding. They're recommending approval of 93 TDRs, but at the same time recommending that the board, who will be the owner of those TDRs, extinguish them rather than add to the large number we already have.
Okay, I follow. So the board would extinguish them?
Correct.
And that would be before we have any hearings on the TDRs themselves? That's, that's the slope I'm asking about there.
It would just not add any more to the TDRs. The existing TDRs will remain.
I guess that's okay then. Personally, I have a little bit of a conflict with these TDRs and what we're talking about. And I mean, we're way off subject here, so I apologize, but the TDRs themselves, and part of the problem is we are not seeing any so-called value to them at this point right now. We don't know what 50 years will bring, and those TDRs could be of value to the county. That's what, the only reason I say, and have even argued at this point, because we don't know what the future holds on them, so. I find that just a little bit, I'm just not comfortable with having that in the motion, that they retire those TDRs after they've approved to have those TDRs. That's my problem.
I'm just passing on the recommendation of the sending site committee.
Is there any other comments? Questions?
Yeah, Mark Hyde, for the record. This question again is for you, Dean. This recommendation comes from the sending site committee, not from you, but from your, your point of view, what's the disadvantage of, of keeping this 93 TDRs and added it to the balance? What's the disadvantage of doing that?
There's very little change other than to stop accumulating TDRs, which we have over 10,000, 12,000 at this time. So whether 93 are added or not doesn't matter too much, other than the idea of not building them up even larger than we already have.
But what Mr. Goings is pointing to is that, is there a possibility that in the future, these do become fungible and, and by keeping track of them in our accounting, that we would have potentially been better off by not losing them and not disregarding them? I guess that's the question.
I don't know if I can really answer that. If you're uncomfortable with not, with, if you're uncomfortable with recommending that they be extinguished, then you can change the motion.
I can attest, like, on the TDRs, that it is for, like, used for, like, a cluster development or a higher density, right? And so when you look at 10,000 TDRs that we have currently in the bank, or 12,000 TDRs, I mean, if you wanted to completely cluster Churchill County, or Fallon, right, I mean, that would probably sum it up. I mean, so I didn't think 93 made that big of a drop in the bucket.
So, no, and I would have to agree with that. I don't think the 93 is where I'm at. My, my problem is, is we retire these TDRs. Let me ask you this real quick, like, because somebody here's got to have the answer to this. What does it cost us to have those TDRs? What does the county, what is the cost to the county to have those TDRs?
The number gets larger and they become, I mean, they already don't have much value, so then the, the more you have, I guess, the less value they have.
My question is, is do they cost us, does the county have an actual cost to maintain these TDRs?
No.
It's costing the county no monies for TDRs. So that's my point is, is at this point right now, nobody knows what the future holds on the TDRs. I agree with Zach, I understand what we're talking about here, but I just have a little problem with potentially asking, you know, allowing the retirement of them without even having some kind of hearing and public comment on it before.
Just to put it in perspective, there's about 10,000 houses in Churchill County, all of Churchill County, including the city. Each TDR is a house, so there's more TDRs than there are existing homes.
And again, Mr. Chair, I'd like to follow up with that. Randy Hines for the record. We've been in discussions with the sending site to have a recommendation to, to do something with these TDRs. Again, we've got 12,700-plus TDRs, right, again, more than we have houses in the county. So we're, we've been discussing that over the last, I guess, about year or so, and I think it's been previous before that. I think we, the, the sending site committee may have jumped the gun a little bit with this, because again, we've been talking about it and trying to, trying to figure out something to do with them. So again, if, if we don't need to necessarily recommend, it was just something they recommended, so if you guys feel, you know, you want to keep the 93, we can just go on. But again, this will be something that'll be coming forward at a later date.
And then just to clarify for Randy, Dean, maybe you guys can answer this. The 12,000 TDRs, that is what the county has, correct?
There's 12,770 some. There's 300.
That doesn't include the private.
There's 300 and some-ish of private, and then the county owns the rest of them, correct?
Yeah.
So, and those are plus or minus numbers.
If there's no other comment, is there any public comment? All right, may I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Goings for the record. Based on the information provided in the application, TDR 25-1 staff report, sending site meeting, and heard tonight, I move to recommend the following to the Board of County Commissioners, approval of the sending site application for Lonesome Duck Ranch LLC based on providing the community benefits of preserving 156 acres of farmland, which, with surface water rights, protecting nearby military operations, and protect, protection of the water recharge areas, and approval of the 93 TDRs on the same property.
It's been moved and seconded, and then based on your motion was just A and B and not C, correct, Jeff?
That's correct.
All right. So all those in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Nay. Passes, one, two, three, four, five, five to one. Thank you, sir. And then, with any zone change, map ordinance amendment, and PD applications always forwarded to Port Accounting Commissioners with the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, so, thank you. All right, moving on to item B, consideration of a possible action, a special use permit application, SUP 24, 25-24, filed by Robert J. Yost of Valley Rentals LLC. The property, property is located at 7250 Reno Highway, Assessor's Parcel Number 007-251-07, consisting of 10 acres. In the C2A10 zoning district, the applicant proposes to operate a commercial equipment or trailer rental business within the C2 zoning portion of the property. Thank you, sir. Can you please state your name and address for the record? Nope, it goes to green, yeah.
R.J. Yost, Valley Rentals, 7250 Reno Highway.
All right, thank you. And Dean, would you like to give us some discussion?
Sure. Thank you, Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning, for the record. So the applicant is seeking a special use permit to operate an equipment rental business, including excavators, forklifts, skid steers, and similar construction machinery. The property contains existing structures, including a home that is in non-conforming use, a shop used for storage, a garage, a barn, and a pump house. The applicant will live in the home, use the shop for storage, and construct a new office space and new shop, and use the open area along the highway for parking and equipment storage. He has future plans for two additional buildings, which you see on the east side, but those are not included in this application, those would be for rental business spaces. Up to 10 customers per day are anticipated. All equipment will be delivered and picked up by the business, customers will not move it themselves. Operating hours will be our normal daytime hour, seven days a week. Notices were sent to neighbors and agencies, comments were received from NDOT. A formal trip generation letter will be needed, an NDOT occupancy permit for any changes in the right of way may be needed, and other boilerplate comments were provided. The building department provided comments regarding needing a licensed contractor for non-resident, non-residential construction, the need for building permits before work is done, and meeting ADA requirements as determined by the building official. The staff report reviews the special use permit criteria. Issues raised included ADA accessibility. Normally, businesses with employees in public access need to meet ADA accessibility requirements. The applicant has been working with the building official and director on this matter. Since the employees are family members and customers will not stay for an extended period, no ADA facilities are necessary at this time. Staff recommends a condition that non-family employees are prohibited. Another issue was landscaping. New and expanded businesses must meet the landscaping code requirements. Parking lot trees are required, but those can be provided by the existing trees, which are found throughout, through the middle of the property, especially along, and then especially along the east side. A landscaping strip is required along the highway frontage, which is listed in conditions of approval. It does not have to have, it does not have to be plants, and there are good examples along the Reno Highway. Another issue is highway access. NDOT, NDOT provided comments, as I mentioned before. Staff inquired directly to them, and they indicated that some changes might be needed, such as possible adjustments to the driveway aprons. I believe these are residential aprons rather than commercial aprons. And there's currently two accesses on the property, and they may limit it to one main access and a closed emergency access, but that will be up to NDOT to work out with the applicant. So the applicant will need to work with NDOT for their requirements. Staff recommends approval, and I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Dean. And so I'd looked at this, and so are you aware of all the conditions listed in the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, and then you're able to make all that happen?
Of course, yes.
All right, thank you. I'll open it up to the board if anybody has any other questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Hyde for the record. Mr. Yost, have you had a chance to engage in a conversation with NDOT?
I have. I've talked to them three times now, left messages, but nobody will call me back, so I keep on calling them, leaving them messages, like I say, and just waiting for them to contact me and let me know exactly what I have to do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
Tammy Edgeman, for the record. So in the conditions, item number four is no external employees is permitted. Seven days a week, you'll be operating the business all to yourself, we'll get that on record?
Yeah, I've been doing that for seven years now.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Any other? Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, may I get a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mark Hyde for the record. Based on the information provided in the application, in the staff report, and heard tonight, I move that the findings have been met for conformance with the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.08.080H, and therefore approve the special use permit for Robert J. Roost of Valley Rentals LLC to establish an equipment rental facility located at 7250 Reno Highway, APN number 00725107. This approval is subject to conditions as listed in the staff report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. And this passes unanimously. Thank you very much. There is a 10-day appeal period on an application approved by the Planning Commission. After that time, the department will be in contact with the applicant to complete the process. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to item C, consideration of a possible action and abandonment of an easement application, AE 25-3, filed by Gary Laca, trustee of the Danny 1987 Trust Agreement. The property is located at Conrad Place, Assessor's Parcel Number 006-231-74, consisting of 7.29 acres in the A5 zoning district. The applicant proposes to abandon the drainage easement along the east and south sides of the parcel. Is there anybody here to speak on that behalf?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Laca was out of town, so I don't think his presence is needed. This is a pretty minor request.
All right, thank you, Dean. Can you give us a little background then?
I'm sorry?
Can you give us a little?
Oh, yeah. Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning, for the record. So the applicant is requesting the abandonment of a 20-foot-wide irrigation easement located within one of his parcels. The easement was intended to be a private easement, but that distinction was accidentally left off. Can you go to the actual map, Diane? Not sure you can see it. Maybe I'll be able to magnify it with this. So the easement on the west side is listed as a private easement, but the easement on the east side is listed as not, so that makes it not a private easement, and that, a private easement is easier to abandon, so this is the process for this abandonment, I'm sorry, this is the process of abandonment for this easement. The easement was to protect future irrigation needs. If the lot was sold to another party, since that time, the applicant has revised development plans, and the easement's no longer needed, he would like to abandon it. The Planning Commission may recommend, and the board may approve the abandonment if it determines that the public will not be materially injured. Notice was provided in the newspapers into abutting landowners, no comment was received. The Public Works Director approves of the abandonment. The county surveyor reviewed the proposal and approved of the abandonment, with text changes that are being worked out with the applicant. So staff recommends approval, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Dean. I do not have any questions. I'll open it up to the board if anybody has any questions or comments. All right, seeing none, is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, may I get a motion?
Tammy Edgeman, for the record. Based on the information provided in the application, in the staff report, and heard tonight, I move that the findings have been met for the conformance with the criteria found in CCC.16.08.050.4H, and therefore recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the request to abandon an unused 20-foot-wide irrigation easement, AE 25-3, located within parcel four of a parcel map recorded as document number 465024 on January 19th, 2018, and official records Churchill County, Nevada, as described in the application, and with changes required by the county surveyor.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please state aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to item D, consideration of a possible action, a home business special use permit, SUP 25-25, filed by Garrett Rosa Jr. of One Horse LLC, Overhead. The property is located at 1955 South Allen Road, Assessor's Parcel Number 008-871-04, consisting of 2.04 acres in the R1 zoning district. The applicant proposes the continued operation of a home-based garage door business at this location. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Garrett Rosa, One Horse Overhead Door LLC, 1955 Allen Road.
Thank you. And then Dean, would you like to give us a little background?
Yes, Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning, for the record. So this project has an unusual background. Randy Stanley operated the One Horse Overhead Door Company at the subject property for over 30 years. He authorized the business by, which was by the sheriff at that time. It's now, business licenses are now with the Public Works Department. Authorized it as a home business under his name and at his home property. Since then, the operations have grown larger than what the current home business rules allow, and have been that way for a while. Randy Stanley recently passed away. He left his son the residence, and he left the applicant the business. The applicant worked for the former owner for over 14, sorry, over 18 years. He currently lives on the property together with the son of the former owner. Since the home business is Since the home business is in the name of Randy Stanley, his death ends the home business permit. Garrett Rusa lives at the site and is requesting the existing business be permitted under his name. So for the project, the applicant is requesting the special use permit to continue to allow an existing business as a home business, specifically changing the ownership name for the permit. On a site visit, staff observed five trucks for business operations, piles of materials, waste materials, storage containers, and six trailers. The property has the main residence where the office and some storage space is located. The garage building is used for storage and vehicle parking. The businesses, sorry, the business does not typically receive customers on-site. The materials are pre-ordered, and assembly is done at the customer's site. The delivery of the materials of the home businesses, home business is normally over the weekend. A home business is accessory to and subordinate to the primary residential use. The home business under Randy Stanley had characteristics that far exceed the home businesses that are permitted today. A primary concern is that the business is not accessory to the home, but rather has become the primary use of the property. The business practices that would need the SUP are A, to have many commercial vehicles and trailers, B, to have three non-resident employees, and C, to have extensive outside storage of business-related materials in different parts of the property. Staff identified several concerns relating, regarding the scale and intensity of the business and its compatibility with the surrounding residential area. On the one hand, it would seem unfair to force a 30-year-old business to close or move suddenly. On the other hand, during the life of the previous owner, the business has grown far beyond the normal limits of a home business. In situations where a business has been successful and grown past the home business limits, staff and the planning commission have encouraged the business to move to a commercial location. There have been a number of success stories like this in the county. In similar situations, the planning commission has given the business a limited time to look for and move to another location. Staff recommends a similar approach in this case. The staff report also reviews the five special use permit criteria. Criteria one relates to neighborhood compatibility. Lands to the northeast and west are all zoned for high or medium density residential development, not commercial use. Homes are located across the street. The proposed home business is highly commercial in nature and is expanded beyond the scope of a typical home business, and it's not compatible to surrounding land uses and development. Staff recommends giving the existing business two years to plan for a move and carry it out. Criteria two relates to conformance with the master plan and the zoning code. The staff report identifies issues with fleet parking. In the event of an approval, there are recommended conditions in the staff report. It also rec, identified issues with ADA accessibility. Normally, businesses with employees need ADA facilities. That would be for handicap parking, building access and restrooms. In the event of an approval, there are recommended conditions in the staff report. The staff report also identifies issues with outdoor storage screening. This would be for the extensive outdoor storage that is not screened at this time. In the event of an approval, there are recommended conditions for that as well. Criteria five relates to environmental impacts on the neighborhood. The business will create impacts on nearby residential uses. That would be the same impacts as a normal business in a business location. It is much more than a normal home business. Impacts include traffic and noise from business vehicles, from employees and their vehicles, and from large delivery trucks on weekends or after hours, also dust generated by the increased traffic on dirt or gravel site, and then noise from banging of large metal objects being moved or manipulated or delivered. So staff recommend, the staff recommendation was for denial with the allowance for the business to have time to find a new location. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Dean. Is there anything you would like to add, Mr. Rusa?
As far as the ADA compliant, I've asked around an attorney. The way we're structured is a zero customer flow. An employee gets hurt, they stay home till they recover. The whole purpose of our workers' comp insurance coverage. And if that isn't good enough to cover the ADA requirement, I have seen a layout plan with a contractor here in town to make the shop half ADA compliant, parking, bathroom, access, all that. And I brought the layout with me to assist with that. And I do have a question. Outdoor screening, what is that?
So outdoor screening is similar to other, like the bulldog automotive, right? Do you see the picture, how everything was screened in so nobody could see in?
Defenseing?
Yeah, so nobody can see in, and that's what, you know, is kind of required on a lot of commercial.
Okay.
Any commercial.
That's the one item I will have a hard time conforming to real quick. I got to fight TCID for permission to build on the north side of the property. That's their ditch. And it's within a 75-foot easement they got onto the property. That's the only concern I have for the temporary use of the property if it's approved for the two-year, that was plausible. But the ADA, I can get a parking and get a ADA-approved toilet on-site.
All right, thank you.
And as far as the excessive overgrowth you were referring to, if you drive by, we're scooping and dumping. We got dumpsters out there. We're clearing all that garbage out of there from the previous business.
All right.
To make it a lot more presentable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. It looked like a, yeah, I won't use that term.
All right. So I just, I did have a question. I mean, is, have you actively looked for a commercial lot yet?
I've been looking, and the rentals are pretty much taken, and buying one is so far out of my budget because you need 180, 200,000 to even start looking. It's so far out of my budget right this minute, I can't even think about it. Next option would be to unfortunately leave the community and move the business to another environment until funds are available to move back.
Okay, and then, because I think everybody's willing to give you some time, you know, on that, to, you know, to make that work, because we're not here to shut your business down.
Right.
And we're not here to ask you to leave town either, you know, so, just so you're aware of that.
No, no, no. And if you're willing to work with me, allow me some time to recoup funds, because if anyone started a business lately, the insurance cost alone is like 30 grand to start a business when you got fleet of vehicles.
Yeah, so, thank you. And then, so those, that kind of answered my concerns on that. I'll open it up to the rest of the board if there's any other questions, concerns.
Mr. Chair, Dean Patterson, for the record. I just had a point of clarification. The recommended conditions of approval, which were the items that Mr. Rusa was talking about, they would be applied in the event that you approved the application. If you denied it but gave them two, gave him two years, then those conditions wouldn't necessarily be needed at this time.
Yeah, so I guess that-
Because he's going to be leaving.
That's good clarification. So everybody's aware here, like, if we give you some time, you know, those changes you don't have to make. If it was approved for your home-based business, then you would have to do the ADA and that.
Right.
So I've just, so everybody's aware of that. So I'll open it back up to the board. Thank you.
Joe Frey for the record. Some of my thoughts are that this does need to go back to residential, and I think we've gotten beyond a residential setting here. That said, the last thing I want to see and the last thing that I would ever encourage is to say go somewhere else right now. One of the thoughts that runs through my mind is, could this still be a home-based business if a big chunk of the moving parts, the trailers, the trucks, some of that was just parked off-site? Would it still qualify at that point for a home-based business if the employees just showed up and got in their trucks at a different site that could be rented for a couple hundred dollars a month possibly to get everything in compliance with the business?
I suppose there's a variety of ways you might approach it, but Diane has a little more experience in how people have done it in the past. I guess that might be an option.
Well, I think, I mean, I could be wrong here, but if we had it parked there, I mean, you could run your business out of a P.O. box and the parking there too. I mean, like, it wouldn't be a home-based business still, I think, is a way we could do that, or see that, but, or wouldn't be a need for a home-based business.
Tammy Edgman for the record. A home-based business is pretty specific in black and white, and it has reached the point that it's far beyond what a home-based business would be. So trying to make it fit into a home-based business, I don't think is our option. I think, and I approve with Dean, it should be denied.
Jeff Goings for the record, and I'm probably just old enough, Mark might get me here on this one, but I'm just old enough to remember what the original was there, and it was a plumbing business. And it was a plumbing business prior to this. So, a very strong portion of me very sympathetic to what's going on with you. I also have codes and regulations that we need to meet amongst the county. I am personally leaning to leave everything in place for two years to, you know, to give you an opportunity to get under, get this business under control and reach out, try to find something within the community to move it to. And I think that's the only way, in my opinion, that's the only way we can do this equitably to satisfy the county's codes and also not to, you know, detriment your business as well.
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mark Hyde for the record. Yeah, I feel the way, the same way Mr. Goings has just expressed. We want you to stay here in town, and we'd like your business to be here. And so in two years, we, I feel that way, if you have a two-year window, you could find another location. There are too many, too many things that now doesn't fit in a home-based business. But a two-year window would allow you to continue to operate your business while you seek to find another, another location that's suitable. So those are, those are my sentiments also, Jeff.
Vick Anzoggi for the record, Mr. Chair. I just want, I live directly across the street from you guys, and I want it to be on record that you have been great neighbors. The semi truck that comes every Sunday has never been an issue. We really want to see you guys do well, but like everybody said, it's just so far out from a home-based business. So with that, if there are, oh, public comments, sorry.
Is there any other comments from the board?
Joe Frey for the record. One thing I just want to, this question would be from Mr. Sanford, I believe, is if we vote for denial of the application, would we be putting the applicant at risk for not being able to apply for another application, say, two years from now? If he changes the structure of this business to a point where it substantially meets the criteria of a home-based business, could he come back with another application in the future?
Mr. Chair, Joe Sanford for the record. Absolutely, he would be able to. The two, the two years that we're discussing here is essentially a request not to enforce the code violations that would require him to start getting fines and be, and be removed. If in the intervening period of time, he either comes up with a new structure, potentially rezones the property, I mean, whatever the issue was that brought the property into conformance, then it would just be in conformance. There's nothing that would say you can't apply, can't make a request to, based off of changed circumstances, but it wouldn't be an authorized home-based business. Essentially, you're saying for the next two years, we're not going to proceed with enforcement actions like we normally would, not that you're approved to have a business. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Joe. Is there any other comments from the board? Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, may I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, Vick Anzoggi for the record. Based on the information provided in the application in the staff report and heard tonight, I move that the findings have not been met for the conformance with the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.08.080H, nor the criteria in Churchill County Code 16.16. Point 020, point 8, point 2, alpha through H, and therefore deny the application for a home business special use permit SUP 25-25 for One Horse LLC Overhead at 1955 South Allen Road. This denial is accompanied by a recommendation to the director to allow two years for the business to find a new location and move.
It has been moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this passes unanimously. So, thank you, Mr. Rusa, and so we have two years to find a commercial business, or a commercial lot or something.
Should be better than a couple weeks.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, moving on to item E. Consideration and possible action, a special use permit application SUP 25-27 filed by Northern Nevada Research Company, NNRC. The property is located at 7162 California Street, assessors parcel number 009-251-84, consisting of 100 acres in the industrial zoning district. The applicant proposes an expansion of the existing combustion, combustion testing facility. Can you guys please state your name and address for the record?
Joshua Bush, 7162 California Street.
All right.
I'm Rebecca Bernier with Blue Stone Engineering.
All right, and your address?
I live in Reno.
All right. All right, Dean, if you'd like to give us a little background.
Thank you. Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning for the Record. So NNRC is a subsidiary for the Tesla Company. They do stress tests on Tesla's batteries to push their limits and learn what causes them to fail. They also do other battery testing, such as certifying them for other countries. The company has obtained other special use permits in the past from this planning commission. All conditions for those permits have been met, though there is still facility construction in the works. The current SUP is a minor expansion to build a new 30-by-40 building located on an existing testing arena. The building is for performing non-stress testing. This building and the previously approved building, which? Oh. I'm not doing it.
Which one do you want?
That one, thank you.
Proposed building location. I'm not sure why it did not.
I'm not sure.
Oh, and the previously approved building. So those are the two buildings that should be coming in the next year. Staff report reviews five special use permit criteria. No major issues were identified. The minor issues noted were making sure to update the emergency response plan to the fire marshal's satisfaction and maintaining state permits. It's a fairly simple application. Staff is recommending approval and be happy to answer questions. Thank you, Dean. Is there anything you guys would like to add?
No, I appreciate the support from the planning committee, and I think they pretty well covered it. This facility, this building being added is specifically for operating space, for setting up of tests that will not be conducted in that facility, mainly to keep it out of the elements.
All right, thank you. So I've seen this several times, and I don't have any questions, so I'll open it up to the rest of the board. Is there any questions or, all right, is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, based on the information provided in the application- Mr. Chair, based on the information provided in the application, in the staff report, and heard tonight, I move that the findings have been met for conformance. The criteria found in CCC 16.08.08H, and therefore approve the special use permit, SUP 25-27 for Northern Nevada Research Company, to expand the explosion slash combustion testing facility on 7162 California Avenue, or California Street, APN 009-251-84. This approval is subject to the conditions as listed in the staff report.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please state aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. Oh. And then there is a 10-day appeal period on the application, and approved by the planning commission. After that time, the department will contact you, the applicant, to complete the process. Thank you. All right, moving on to Item 10, code changes. A, consideration of a possible action, Bill 2025-A, Ordinance 32, and Ordinance Amending Title 16 of the Churchill County Code in establishing the I-1, I-2, and I-3 zoning districts, deleting the I zoning district, defining the zoning and design review process establishing zoning requirements for existing and additional industrial land uses, clarifying the requirements for the power and generation facilities, and other matters related thereto. Would you like to give us a little more discussion, Randy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Randy Heinz, for the record. Again, this is just a continuation of what we've been doing. We started this process for, you know, revamping our, our industrial zone within our code. This, again, started back in March. We had two workshops, one on April 22nd, we had another one on June 24th. Those were joint workshops with both the planning commission and the, and the Board of County Commissioners. I'm not going to go back through that, but I've got some highlights in here. Again, our goals for this, for these code changes regarding the industrials, for clarity within the code, right? Also for economic development, community protection, and managed growth. So, so again, these proposed changes that we've come, come forward to you guys, those are our goals as far as, as the department. So, the, the workshops were kind of 40,000-foot level, high level, right? Over the last, since the June 24th meeting, Amos and Dean have put an extremely, and Joe as well, an extreme amount of effort into what we've given you guys. So I'd like to give some highlights on here, and I think, go ahead to the next slide. That might be a little too small, but we did assign names for each of the industrial zones. We've got I-1, which is commercial industrial, because again, it's really adjacent to commercial properties, is kind of where we're getting, where we're putting those I-1s. I-2, we're just calling that industrial, and I-3 is going to be our heavy industrial zone, so you'll see that in the, in the code changes. Section 16.08.250, the use table for all zoning districts, we deleted the entire existing table, and we replaced it with the new table, and again, that's in the, in the packet. We revised the table to indicate what uses are allowed, allowed within SUP, or prohibited in the new industrial zones. And additionally, we removed the administrative special use permit and grouped that with the conditional zoning permit, just to kind of clean some things up in there. So, again, both of those are administrative functions, so we didn't need two of them, so we just combined them to be in one. We added Section 16.08.065 for zoning reviews. We didn't really have a section in there for our zoning review process, that was added. We added Section 16.08.75, 075, for the conditional zoning permit. This, this zoning, this conditional zoning permit is the permit where the use is allowed with this conditional zoning permit rather than an SUP. So, this use through a conditional zoning permit is designated C in the, in the use table, which you'll see in the, in the code changes. We made minor edits to Section 16.08.080, the special use permit, again, just cleaning some stuff up in there. We added Section 16.08.085 for conditional use permits. Excuse me, through, through the, the code changes, we've, we found that NRS requires us to do some more, well, let me just read it. Conditional use permit is a permit to operate a facility where an explosive, highly hazardous substance designated pursuant to NRS 459.3816 is present in quantities greater than designated in NRS 459.3816, or hazardous substance adopted pursuant to NRS 4593833 will be used, manufactured, processed, transferred, or stored. So really, those highly hazardous materials will require a conditional use permit rather than a special use permit. And, and I think, and Dean can correct me if I'm wrong, there's, there's more notification, there's longer notification periods, there's just more requirements in that conditional use permit than in a special use permit. Again, we discovered this, we didn't have it accounted for, and that, that's why we're adding this section in, in code. So, again, those will probably be pretty, pretty much isolated to the I-3 areas, but, yeah. So, with that, we also revised Section 16.24.010, the definitions generally. We, we either revised or added definitions for the industrial uses that are in the table. So, again, those are in your, in, in the packets. Going through those definitions, we, we found out that some of the definitions weren't really defining what, what the use was. So again, Dean put in a big effort into researching those definitions and hopefully making them clear for, for, for people that want to use, that have that use. We also revised Section 16.16.030, the renewable energy facility. We, we changed the renewable energy facility to a power generation facility. So in there, we've got, we have private, and then we have minor and major, is that correct? So, so we have, we have private power generation, minor power generation, and major power generation. We, when we, and we put both renewable and, and, and fuels, yeah. So, so the power operate, or the power generation facilities are classified by the source of power generated, being include fuel-based resources, including generators and renewable resources. Again, the, the private is more, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, Dean, like solar panels at a house, that would be a private. The minor power generation was limited to 500 kilowatts, which would be like backup generator for a hospital, or a, you know, medical facility, or a school, or stuff like that. The major power generation would be like your Sierra Solar Project, the geothermal project, stuff like that. So, so those are kind of the highlights what, that we, we really dove into in this last month and a half or so, from, from our last workshop. We did receive a, a letter from SB Energy, and I'm not sure if you want me to read this whole letter, Joe, or do you want me to just highlight it? I've got some sections to highlight.
You can, you can read the highlights, it's been provided to the commission, and so they are aware of it.
So, SB Energy is a proposed client I'd like to come to Churchill County for, to put in some more solar panels out in the 40-mile desert. They, they sent us a letter, and I'm just going to read a couple paragraphs in here. On behalf of SB Energy, a renewable energy developer committed to advancing a portfolio of energy solutions, we respectfully urge the Churchill County staff and planning commission to designate major power generation renewable projects, such as our proposed 40 Mile North Solar Project, and that's an exhibit in, in, in the packet, as subject to zoning review, which would be a conditional zoning permit, is that right? Yeah. Rather than requiring a special use permit in the I-2 and in the I-3 zoning districts. The current industrial zoning framework, as noted on Page 4, highlights the diverse range of industrial activities, from concrete plants to battery testing facilities, each requiring individual review. Unlike many of those intensive uses, utility-scale solar and battery storage facilities such as 40 Mile North Solar Project are low-impact, non-disruptive, and environmentally benign, making them well-suited for streamlined zoning review. As outlined on Page 11, zoning review ensures that projects are constructed and operated in a manner that does not overburden public services, mitigates road and traffic impacts, and avoids or mitigates adverse environmental effects such as noise, glare, fumes, or odors. Solar projects inherently meet these standards. They generate minimal noise, are secured by perimeter fencing, and pose no risk or fuel spillage, explosions, or chemical hazards, unlike some of the more intensive uses permitted in the I-3 zone. Furthermore, utility-scale solar technology relies on anti-reflective technology to greatly reduce glint and glare associated with some smaller pro, or some smaller installations. Additionally, we respectfully request clarification regarding the half-mile setback from the highway referenced in the zoning framework, and request that Churchill County Code 161602.0.2 for half-mile setback from the highways be removed from the major power generation. So this was something that was in the use table, it has been removed in the use table. One of their concerns was that it wasn't allowing any solar panels to be within that half-mile, that we, we may have called it a setback in one of the workshops, it's more of a friction zone, right, Dean? Yeah, so, so again, that's been removed from the power generation, so. But it never applied, so. So that's kind of, again, you have the letter, they've, they've put together some, some exhibits in here showing kind of their proposed project. They've, they've kind of given a little bit of exhibit regarding the, the glint and glare analysis for the project, again, preliminary in nature. And again, we did not, we did not make this change, because it was something that we received after the workshop, and, and it was something that you guys haven't seen or heard yet, so, but we did want to bring it to your attention that, that we did get a letter from SB Energy requesting that you consider making those a conditional zoning permit rather than a, a special use permit in those, in those areas. And if that's the case, then we would prob, if, if you guys do recommend that, we would probably have to break out the solar energy production and make it its own line, because it won't be part of, because, because we're, it's going to be different classification than the other ones. So, again, it's just a recommendation from them. With that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Randy. So could you clarify just a little bit right there at the end? So on the, on the I-3, they wouldn't, they just need the permit, correct? But in the I-2, wouldn't they have to actually qualify for like an SUP to change that zoning?
So what they're requesting is that solar power, major power generation be a, a conditional zoning permit in both I-2 and I-3.
And currently, we have it as just I-3?
I believe it currently is a special use permit in both.
In all, yes.
In all, in I-2 and I-3.
Including RR20.
And RR20.
Randy, could you describe to everybody here the difference between the special use permit and the condition, the zoning, the zoning?
Yes.
And the, and what it takes to, to get your project approved?
Okay. Yeah, so, we'll start with this, this special use permit, because that's what we have, right? Basically, an applicant will apply for a special use permit for their project, and it'll get processed through the, through the department. We send out notifications to either 300-foot, a, a circle around the property 300 feet, or 30 unique owners, right? And that could expand that circle out even farther. I think in some of the, in some of the other projects, we've been out like 4,000 feet. So, to get those 30 unique owners. From there, we get comments back, staff is actually reviewing the project. We could potentially be sending reports out to third-party review, if, if it's required. We'll do our, our thorough investigation, make sure that it, it meets county code, prepare staff report, then it gets presented to, to the planning commission for either approval or denial. That's kind of just short synopsis of what happens. The conditional zoning permit is, is the same thing. It's, it, we get the application, it's an approved use with, with this permit. We, we still send out notifications, the same, same notifications that we do for the special use permit. We still do the same internal review. If we have to send it out for third-party review, we send it out. We, we, we determine whether it may, it meets all county code requirements, and then the decision is made administratively through the department, and it doesn't go through, because it's, it's, we've, we've considered it an approved use in that zoning district. So we still ensure that it meets county code, we take anything, anything, any comments that come in from the public that, I guess are, what's the word I'm looking for, are legitimate comments, right? That, oh, there's a, there's a stream that runs through this parcel that maybe we didn't see, right? We'll take those comments into, into account, and we can put certain conditions, or reasonable conditions, on that project administratively and not through the, through the planning commission, so.
I'll just add one additional clarification, if you would. Joe Sanford, for the record. The primary difference in terms of the approval piece, when a special use permit comes before this board, it is discretionary choice for this board whether you're going to approve it or not. And so if, if a majority of this board says, you know, we just don't like this project, we don't like this type of use at all, and we deny it. There's some issues with it, but technically that is within your abilities. The conditional permit that we're talking about is one where this board will have said, this is the type of use we do want here. It's still going to have to be consistent with the neighborhood, still have to be built in conformance with the master plan, still going to have all of the same conditions, like what you would look at in the back of your packet from the special use permit, those listed conditions, those would be the same. The difference is, that decision that says, you just, we just don't want this type of business, has already been made because it's been zoned as an approved use.
Thank you, Joe.
But currently, it's not, that's what we're making the change.
Correct. That is what the decision is being done here. When you make this zone, and you're saying, this is something that we would want in these zones, that is what the decision you're making today.
Yeah. Today, we're making a decision of whether we're going to require an SUP for a power generation rather than a, a permit. Or we're allowing, we're going to make the change that all's they need is to go through and get a permit.
Yeah, and to give, to give a little bit more input on the, on the table itself, right? Really, most of the change is done from the existing I, and, and most of the, most of the change is done in I-1, I-2, I-3. That's really what we were focusing on. We did get into the commercial where we, we went through and said, well, maybe this commercial use isn't really, and I think if you go down to Page 10, 15, something like that, this, this commercial use, we really don't want in an industrial zone, but this commercial use, maybe we do, right? So, so again, this is, there was really nothing from, I think, C-2 over to the left that was changed, right, Dean? Or very minimal.
It might be one or two things.
Yeah, it's minimal what was changed from C-2 to the left. Really, we focused from I-1, I-2, I-3. So, and that's kind of what, 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 what we've proposed. Now, there hasn't been much change, I don't think, since the workshop, and I think we read this, most of this, really, I think the second workshop, we read most of this use table out at that workshop. So, it was just kind of cleaning it up a little bit.
So, just as, for a little bit of clarification, so, what we would, what we need to do here is if, if we were to consider this and want to accept what these people are asking here, so then you'd really need to break the solar away from the power generating plants. away from the power generating plants in that if we did a blanket over the top of that, then that opens up for power generation in any of these Zone 2, Zone 3. I-1, I-3, excuse me, I-2, I-3. Okay, so would that be something that would need to be made in this motion? Is that something that needs to be done at staff level and then come back for reapproval?
I'll go ahead. So, Mr. Goings, if you wanted to adopt the recommendation here, you would put that in your motion that you want to do that, and then staff would go into actually the logistics of how that would get done in the table. You're not going to have to try and draft it in the table here. Instead, you'd be saying, I would like to see major solar generation projects as a conditional zoning permit in the I-1 or I-2 and I-3 zoning projects, or just I-3, or whatever your recommendation's going to be.
Yeah, and to clarify, I guess everybody's on the same page here. SB Energy is recommending...
I agree.
No, that's, they're not, I mean, not agreeing. They're wanting us to agree with what is being asked of us here. There's a letter of recommendation. It's not of, you know, that. And that's all that is. It's whether they go forward with a project or not. I mean, that is unbeknownst to us, so.
I understand that. But I guess my question would be then, it needs to be a separated item on this particular list because it's going to be solar-powered renewable energy and not fall under to your power generating, which it currently is falling under now, right?
Correct. We would just add another line below that power generation.
Got you.
Is there any other questions, concerns from the board?
Joe Frey, for the record, just for clarity, are we also looking to recommend this to the Board of County Commissioners tonight?
Yeah, so that'd be the motion to recommend what we've presented here, the 106 pages. That's what will be presented to the board. I think we've got it, you know, if you guys recommended it on the September 4 meeting, and then the second reading would be at the 17th.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Hyde, for the record. You know, Randy, and Dean, all the work that you've done in this, as you look at this request from SB Energy, you're quite comfortable, aren't you, having this be split out, for example, as they're recommending, so that it would come under a conditional zoning permit as opposed to an SUP? Just because it's a different kind of, cleaner type, it's the noise factor, a lot of the things that they're recommending, maybe it does need to be separate, and it's something that would be handled really in your department. It wouldn't come to us in an SUP environment. I just wanted to have you weigh in, what's your feelings on it?
You just want to put me on the spot?
I do.
What you want to do. Okay. Again, this, I think this project is similar to the one that you guys approved in, what, a month last, last year? We did, it's similar, it's same size as what Sierra Solar was. So again, you, I mean, this, the planning commission was in favor of the project as well. So again, it's, it's no different for us either way. I mean, it's, I don't know if I want to, I don't know if I want to answer that, Mark. Not that it's good or bad, but, but again, I think, I think if that's something that we want in the county, right, especially along the I-80 corridor, if that's something that you guys are comfortable with being an administrative function, then, again, it's, that's your recommendation. And then, of course, the board would have to approve it from there. They may have a different vision. I don't know. So, but again, we just went through this with a very, phase one, and there'll be another phase to come in with that one, so.
One more thought here is the I-3 heavy industrial pretty much takes up that whole I-80 corridor. I'm trying to remember exactly where all that was. We have a pretty good section of it out there towards Kennametal on 95 North. Where else do we have it? I guess out towards, towards south of town, correct?
Yeah, so there are actually, again, our code is changing the existing industrial parcels. There are no industrial parcels located on I-80 as it sits today. Those are RR-20 or something else, right? If they do, if SB comes through, they're probably going to request a zone change to get it to the I-2, I-3 in those parcels that they're looking at, right? We do have some parcels, some I-3 parcels that are north of Hazen. We have some I-3 parcels that are south of Hazen. We have some over there by Safety Claim. Those are the I-3 parcels. We have I-3 parcels designated out by Kennametal. And then, of course, I-3 down by the, at the junkyard or the landfill. So, again, outskirts of town, and going back to the meetings we've had for the last four or five months, that's kind of been the concern. We want the industrial, but we want it out there. We want the industrial, but we want it out there. And that's kind of, you know, we've been listening, and that's kind of what we're working on doing, so.
I guess my one concern with this whole thing is, is that you have an I-3, so let's just say we approve, we get the I-3 industrials. For a solar generating company to come in and buy up large plots of I-3 property to be able to put their solar generating on, which is fairly inexpensive compared to regular type construction. I mean, nothing's inexpensive, but compared to, let's say, a warehouse facility, okay? In this particular case, what is the income potential off of all of our I-3 being easily developed for renewable energy and all of a sudden burning up a bunch of our I-3 that could potentially be used for warehousing or something that is a little more dollar-producing?
I guess, no, I mean, I could kind of speak to that after doing the NV Energy stuff. You know, I mean, we do get the personal property tax on all the solar panels and things like that. The other thing is, is, I mean, I don't know if you caught it earlier, but a lot of the stuff that they're looking at could be, they could be looking to rezone some property that they were to buy. So it's not like that we're using all of our, you know, industrial land. And then, I mean, there's lots of those parcels, like Randy had indicated, that could be rezoned, you know, that are, that would fit the criteria to fit in an I-1, I-2, I-3 at that time, and then they would have to come.
Yeah, it was just a thought, concern that I had here, that, you know...
Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm done.
And just keep in mind, right, RR-20, which probably encompasses 95% of the county, is, this was allowed with an SUP, so it's, somebody could really come in and cover 95% of the county in solar if they wanted to, potentially, but it'd just be through an SUP, so.
Joe Frey, for the record, a couple of comments here. The way I see it is all the changes that we've discussed in the workshops have been made to both the code and to the map. You know, this is kind of the only last little change. I personally would like to see this continue to move forward. I'm not 100% certain that, how the language would roll on this exemption for solar. I personally, off the top of my head, feel like it's a great idea, but if this is moving to the Board of County Commissioners, there'll be another opportunity to look at that and another opportunity to work on that over the next month, but we can look at that while it's moving forward. Anyway, that's my feeling.
And just to be clear, it's not an exemption. You're just, it's an approved use. That's, I mean, we're not giving any exemptions to the solar. It's just an approved use. And if that's something that you recommend is, you know, their recommendation, you want us to put that in the motion, those changes would be made prior to the September 2, Board of County Commissioners, so that that change would be incorporated. It wouldn't have to come back to front of you guys. Because those are, like, when we talk changes at the workshop, that's a minor change for us. A major change would be you guys be coming in and be like, no, we don't want this conditional zoning permit. We want something completely different, and it's a 40, 60 hours worth of work. We just can't make that happen, so we would have to push out going to the board.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments from the board? Is there any public comment? Can you please come up and state your name and address for the record? Could you hit it one more time?
That's the red light.
Oh, there you go. You're good.
Scott Hyatt. I live in Reno. I'm here, I'm just really kind of curious how these parcels were picked to be I-1, I-2, or I-3. Hyatt Land actually owns some of the parcels in this section that are actually medium, I believe, around the airport, and I just, I think it was already industrial property.
So, yeah, so they were already industrial zone, right? And so then we clarified on, based on, and maybe Joe wants to take this, but based on their location, you know, to homes and different things, and we're proposing to create the I-1, I-2, I-3, you know, to kind of differentiate of what's allowed uses, and that's the table of stuff that we were, that we've been talking about of those allowed uses that, in those zoning areas. And most likely probably doesn't impact those parcels that you own, actually.
No, it really doesn't. I'm just curious, are these, the I-3 basically parcels that solar people are looking at to build solar, that's why they've been moved to I-3?
I'll let Joe take that.
Again, regarding the solar, it's, SB Energy, the parcels that they currently own are RR-20. If the board, if the board approved those to be a conditional zoning permit, then they would probably rezone their parcels to an I-2 or I-3 so they could do that with a zoning review, a zoning, a conditional zoning permit. I'm trying to remember the name, so. But again, their parcels are RR-20, so they don't even have any parcels that are industrials as it sits today.
So these parcels currently are RR-20?
SB Energy's parcels?
Yes, I'm assuming that that's these blue ones.
No, so these blue ones, if you go to the map, so I-80's not even on this map.
Right, no, I understand. I got the...
So, so these blue ones are, that's, the blue ones on the top right are in the Kennametal area. Those are I-3. The other blue ones to the left, north of Hazen, those are, those are proposed to be I-3 and out in the desert.
And they have solar out there already?
No, I think, so the I-3 isn't just designated for solar. I mean, this is, and I guess maybe there's a misconception here, a solar company recommended that we, in support of the county of making these changes, right? There's no active solar projects going on currently, and I don't believe there's anything been requested, you know, to put in solar yet, so, or anything actively that way.
Right, but the geothermal plant out there already currently has solar.
Correct.
So maybe just for clarification, the zoning that we're talking about doing today, it's actually the next agenda item. There are currently 150 or 160 parcels that are zoned industrial within the county. We are deleting the industrial section and instead relabeling it either I-1, I-2, or I-3. So every existing industrial zoned parcel, like you may have, is going to receive a designation so that it can be clear which of those versions it's going to be. And essentially, the zoning department, as well as both of the workshops with the planning commission and the county commission, reviewed all of those parcels in selected areas of concern about which ones should be I-1, which is the commercial industrial, which ones were meant for medium industrial, and which ones were meant for heavy industrial based off of proximity to residential, potential impacts to neighbors, things of that sort. And so the part you were talking about, I think, next to the airport, had some proximity to some residential zones. So the ones that were directly next to residential zones were suggested to be I-1. The ones that were a little off of some industrials were set to be I-2. And then I-3 is ones were set out in the more 40-mile desert or substantially off of the populated zones.
So some of the parcels near the airport went from I-1, went from industrial, you broke it into two different sections because some of them are closer to houses or whatever. All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion for item, or item A under the code changes?
Mr. Chair, Joe Frey, for the record, I'll take a stab at this. I move to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the zoning map amendment and Bill 2025-A code amendment with approved use that solar be allowed in I-2 and I-3 zoning with conditional zoning permits.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. And that passes unanimously, and so any zone change, map, ordinance amendment, or PUD application always gets forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners with the planning commission's recommendation. So, thank you. We're going to move on to item B. Consideration of a possible action and ordinance amending zoning districts is under consideration by Churchill County. Current industrial zone parcels listed below will be designated as I-1, light industrial, I-2, medium industrial, or I-3, heavy industrial. And it'll be all the parcels that are listed here on the agenda. Thank you. Go ahead, Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Randy Hines, again, for the record. So, so this is, we've made some minor modifications to this map based on the last workshop. Again, this is, we've seen this map, I think it changed minor from the first workshop to the second, and then again, minor as it sits today. Some of the big changes, if you can go to the first slide, Diane. So in here, you can see, and I don't know if this pointer works or not, which button is it?
It's the top button.
So in here, you can really see, yeah, she doesn't have the cursor over there. Yeah. I need a laser pointer. Okay, so the big change in here, we're on the two sections, so you see the four, yeah, go ahead and do it, yeah. So those four sections, that's one of the big changes we had. We do have some residential parcels along the red, the red stripe there, and we have the green, and we have the blue. So basically, we're creating a commercial industrial, medium, and then heavy to have that buffer from those residential areas. Same thing along the section to the east, the next section, yeah. We did the same thing. We buffered away from those existing residences with I-1 to I-2 to I-3. Those ones are a little bit easier because they're kind of broken out into sixteenths, sixteenth sections, so they're kind of easier to do. If they were to come in and maybe potentially combine all those into one section, we would probably end up having some friction zones in there that would still accommodate this same concept, right? The south parcel we just kept is I-3. It's surrounded by BLM. The one closer up to the highway, the north parcel, that one, we did I-2 because, again, it's along the corridor of the highway. North of Hazen, this hasn't changed, but again, that's all kind of I-1 because there's the existing houses there in Hazen, and then all the stuff over by the Fernley Business, or, I'm sorry, RGA Portinavada, again, I-2 in that area. I think, can you go back to the first slide? I think that was probably, I think that might have been, because the change down over there by Lhaun, and that was one of your first requests, to change those to I-1, that was in there. Go to the third, that slide. I think this is a slide Scott's kind of talking about. Again, we made those two northerly parcels in I-1. They're kind of closer to those houses. The airport, Rattlesnake Hill, some of the industrial parcels down there by Rio Vista, again, I-1. This other stuff, I-2, there's really not much around there, so. And that I-2, the, some of the green, you've got the transfer station out there, you got the, is it the junkyard or the? station out there, you got the, is it the junkyard or the, yeah, he's the scrap metal guy. So, again, more, more, a little heavier, heavier industrial uses. Um, go down one more slide, Diane. This is the Kennametal area. I think we kind of, this, this, I did, I guess I did change this. This is kind of where, you know, we've had suggestions, and this could be something that we, I guess this is a discussion point. Those bigger parcels, the big ones, Kennametal, um, those I think were I-2, I-3, I-2 along the corridor of the highway, and again, we can, I can go back to that, it's just they're big parcels by themselves, so I had changed those to I-3, um, with caveat that you cannot have any explosion, um, brothels, anything like that that go along the highway, we still have that in there, but again, out of town, out of sight, I'm not saying out of sight, out of mind, but out of town, right? These other ones are just kind of smaller parcels in there. I didn't change those for discussion, right? If we wanted to make those I-3, we can make those I-3, we can make the other ones back to I-2, we can do, I mean, again, it's, these are kind of just ideas that, that, that we're putting out in this area, so, um, I think we need to kind of focus on that a little bit and just make a determination there. Um, go down one more, or is that it? Yeah, that's it, go up. No, that's the other one. Yeah, nothing really changed here, we kind of kept that as was, presented before, go up one more. Um, yeah, that's it. So, so really, not much change, but just pretty minor changes based on, on recommendations from you guys at the, at the workshop, and then, like I said, I did make those changes up by Kennametal, those can always go back if, if we want to see I-2 out there, so.
I'm sorry. Just a quick question, Randy. In that Kennametal section, how do we come up with that I-2 just north of all of that I-3? Just, just curiosity.
Yeah, so, so, I think in the previous one, we had, we had those parcels, the, we had the farthest one to the left as an I-2, we had Kennametal as a split I-2, I-3, we had I-2 along the highway, um, and then I-3 out where the leaders at, and we had that same one on the bottom right parcel, we had a, a green and a blue. Um, I had changed, just to show an example, is we can make those an I-3 if you guys, if that's desired, right? Then if we did that, we'd probably make those top ones I-3 as well. It's a discussion point, right? So, um, because again, there, that was kind of the, the suggestions from the public is, that's kind of where we want to have the heavy industrial, so, um.
What I was just thinking here is, like, we've got heavy industrial to the south, but then all of a sudden we have a few parcels to the north that are really far removed from everything, that then went to an I-2, so.
So, so when you guys, you know, in, in, in your, in your recommendation or whatever, if that's, if we want to make those changes, those are easy changes for us to make, I just changed the color of the hatching, so.
So, but on that, Randy, those were smaller parcels, that's why you left them in the I-2, right? Parcel size.
There was, there was no rhyme or reason, it was just a discussion point, that these are industrial parcels out, out farther away from town.
But I would agree, like on that, even with the I-3 out there like that, I mean, there's no housing, there's no, nothing that butts up, and then with the road restrictions, you know, being that far off the, I mean, so.
That fits with me.
And really, those, those smaller ones are actually right, within the half, that, that's the half-mile line either side of the highway is that, the two lines on both sides, so, um, they would fit in there, in that friction zone anyway.
So, I'm good with that. And then, uh, and then if anybody else has anything to add from the rest of the board?
Joe Frey, um, I, and maybe I jumped the gun on my previous motion on item A, but I, I believe that, at least my intent was to move all of this on to the Board of the County Commissioners as you have it, with the one exception, so, um, if that encompasses everything, I don't know, do we need another motion? Or do we have it all covered?
Actually, we'll need one for item B. We'll need a motion, we'll need a motion for item B on this also. Yeah, two different items, so, this would be, if, if we were to move forward with a motion to approve and want to change those green parcels that, uh, to I-3, that would be in our recommendation.
So, correct. Item A was to adopt the ordinance that established these zoning districts into existence, and item B here is to actually assign particular, uh, zones to these parcels, and so, uh, this would be the time to change those I-2s to I-3.
Yeah, I, I do just have one, one comment, one question, actually. We always look at the entrance into Fallon as a gateway, coming from Reno and coming through Fernley, Hazen, and then, we're very protective of that corridor. And I just had this thought, you know, um, this is our north entrance into Fallon, and we keep, we want to throw everything out there, I, I get that, but I'm just wondering if, right along the highway, if we do want green instead of blue. Um, I, I'm thinking that years from now, we might say, boy, that was short-sighted, you know, to have heavy industrial right up along the highway. I just wonder if we want to have some, some buffer there, make that green, and then, then go to the blue. Just a question.
Yeah, um, Diane, can you go back to the proposed zoning table for industrial, please? Sorry. And I think it's like 15, whatever, let's scroll down a little bit. There, oh, there you go. So, industrial uses wherever they're at. There you go. So, as you can see, between the I-2 and I-3, I think we have... Yeah, I can't, I'm trying to see it, too.
Randy, could I also take a stab at, uh, what Mr. Hyde's after? In, in some of these locations, I think what you were explaining is, in some ways, it doesn't matter if it's labeled I-2 or I-3, it's going to be I-2 because it's in the friction zone within the half-mile of the entryway.
Good, okay, yeah. All right, thank you.
And, and really, that, that friction zone is to eliminate, is to not allow, um, explosion, right, um, facilities and/or brothels, and I think there was, was that something else in there, Dean?
Junkyards.
Yeah, junkyards as well, so. So, again, there, those, I-2 and I-3 are pretty similar, but once you get into I-3 and you get into the heavy, um, chemicals and stuff like that, that's where we're getting into the conditional use permits and so on and so forth. So, I, again, I don't know if it's, we, we are really, I think 50 coming in from Fernley is more of the gateway that we kind of focus on, 80, 80 doesn't even come through town, it's, and we've had this discussion internally, right? 80 is a different animal than 50, 95 is a different animal than both. I mean, you know, it's, it's, there's not a lot, a 95 coming into town, you get to Wade Lane or whatever, that now you're into town, but out there is a different animal than 50 coming from Fernley, so, they are different, but right now, we're kind of, kind of doing same, same but different, I guess, so.
And the fact that that corridor, as you're entering into that I-3 or proposed I-3, you're still within 15, probably 15 miles of, of downtown Fallon anyway, so, I mean, it, I, I get what you're saying, too, Mark, I, I follow where you're at there, but I think we're, we're, you know, we're, we're pushing that as far out as possible so that, you know, you have kind of a, a buffer between the city and, and those I-3s.
Yeah, and again, it was just a, a, an example that we could do, we could do multiple things, again, whatever you, whatever you guys would prefer to recommend to the board.
Any other comments? Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, can we have a, oh, there we go. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, uh, Rob Carnahan, I'm at 397 Rancho Land Way. And, uh, obviously, there's, our, we're right off of Rio Vista, so, we, we received letters, you know, and, and that kind of, as a community member, it's kind of like, oh my gosh, what's going to be happening here? So, I think one of the things we're trying to do is understand from a community perspective, a resident, what this means to us. You guys understand, you know, the I-1s, 2s, 3s very well. I think a lot of the community members coming in here are like, oh my gosh, what does this mean to me? So, I guess the question to all of you is, if you were in my area there, my, in my subdivision, what questions would you be asking right now? Or what, what would you be asking you as a, as a board? And is there anything that we need to worry about, like, is, what could go up? You know, we don't want a brothel, obviously, so that's a great thing, we don't want to go there, um, in, next to our community, so those things are, you know, so our, our homes are very sacred, and we just want to make sure that, that we have the, a community and that's very safe, and we're not building big industrial plots just adjacent to our property. So, that's my question to you all, what questions would you ask this team right now?
Can I just a quick stab at that for you?
Well, Jeff, why don't you hold on, and, I'm going to go ahead and lead this as the chair, right? Yeah, so, I think the biggest clarification that you're going to get, or the biggest question I'd ask, right, is that it was just a plain industrial, right? There was everything under the sun, all thrown in, and then industrial zoning, right? And so, what we've tried to do here is make the industrial 1, 2, and 3, so the 1 being light industrial, like a commercial industrial, and then we went to 2 is, is a little heavier, and then 3, like, real heavy. So, like, where you're located, right where you're at, we've actually probably reduced the exposure you would have had of just the regular industrial zoning. So, it benefits, it benefits you as a homeowner, and that's why we didn't, we tried to limit that type of, uh, industrial use in those areas, because of the homes and the interference and things like that, that, that would be problematic as a homeowner, or reduce your property values, or, you know, impact you negatively, and that's why we've kind of taken this approach on everything, because before, it was pretty wide open, they could have done whatever they wanted there if the county approved it, right? So, I mean, this actually limits that, so, to address that, I mean, from your standpoint.
Thank you.
And again, to follow up, too, right? Um, we, we, it still has to conform to county code and not be a nuisance to, right? Even though it is close to the residents, we're going to ensure that they're not running forklifts at 12 o'clock at night while you're trying to sleep, you know what I mean? So, there's, then that's why we, we, we do it with the conditional zoning permit, because it's, it's following the same SUP, we're still doing all the same work, we're just, it's an approved use, and then we would allow it, but we would still make sure that it meets county code and not create nuisances to the, the, the adjacent residences, so.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion for item B?
Mr. Chairman Jeff, thanks for the record. I move that we recommend to the County Commissioners the approval of the zoning districts as presented below, with the minor change of converting the, um, parcels in that Kennametal section, those five parcels there, to I-3.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously, so any zone change, map, ordinance amendment, or PUD application is always forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners with the Planning Commission recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to, um, again, thank Joe and Dean and Amos for Diane, um, for the, all the work and effort that went into this. This has been about a five-month process, and a lot of information went through you guys, the board, um, the office, and, um, again, this was not a small, a small change to code, so, um, I greatly appreciate everybody's, uh, effort and time on this.
No, thank you guys all, so. All right, moving on to item 11, the consent agenda, can I get a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, we do have item A there, do we need to vote on that, or do we approve this as a total consent agenda?
Total consent.
I move that we, um, approve the consent agenda as submitted.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Uh, moving on to item 12, is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none, item 13, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.